Are you looking for quality, handcrafted, one-of-a-kind, unique items? Look no farther than Off the Square Artisans. We have over 40 artists ranging from woodworking to blacksmithing, photography, rug weaving, handmade soaps, and everything in between. If you're looking for home decor or a gift for that hard-to-shop-for friend or family member, come on into Off the Square Artisans located at 205 East High Street, one block east of the south side of the Rockville Square. Wednesday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sundays, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m.
You want to go and then go first and start making me?
Go ahead.
Did you say start with my name? Did you say start with my name?
I can.
Ashley Wilson. Do you have pictures of what is left that you were talking about? I took a video.
I have photographs, but I just passed them to Kathy, I believe, because she requests...
Is it the piles of wood?
Like, this stuff here.
Okay, I wheelbarrowed the pile.
It's like we discussed with them, like, we've made progress, but we get, there's a timeline, so we just have to follow up. That don't mean that we're going to take action, but that's why, I mean, I'm glad you showed up, right?
But I did, well, the first pile that you showed, I did wheelbarrow it and put it in the dumpster.
Okay, these were yesterday, so I didn't follow up today.
But the wood is getting picked up Saturday. It's getting cut up and picked up Saturday. The wood, I didn't think would be an issue. We did fill up one dumpster heaping, and we didn't know that the dumpster wouldn't hold at all. We tried to get the debris that would blow away in first, and we kept all the wood out first because it wouldn't blow away. And what is mainly left on the ground has to be raked up, stuck in the dirt, has to be shoveled. But other than that, the wood, we have to cut it up this weekend. Somebody's taking it day one.
My viewpoint is, like, my end goal with that is to get it to a point that we can mow it safely and not run over stuff that'll throw debris or rocks in the windows and other properties.
Yeah, we've already mowed it once. But I've already raked some of it. We've got to get the wood out of there first, which they're, my stepdad's coming out there to, and somebody else cutting it up Saturday, and someone calling it off because they want it for, I don't know, I don't know if they want it for what they want it for, but it's someone that I work with that wants it.
So basically, if you remember, we gave her 90 days. We had that deadline. Lots of improvement. Not 100% satisfactory. I commend them for their efforts, though, at least they've made it. She wasn't home when I was there yesterday, so I left a note asking her to attend the meeting and, you know, tell you guys her plan, so that's where we're at.
I mean, I thought, to me, I thought it was, I thought, I thought it was done, of course, I mean, debris-wise, blowing around-wise, like, I didn't think, nothing else could blow into anybody's yard, and I thought that was what you guys wanted. I mean, we still have, we still have more to clean up, yes, but I didn't think that I had more to...
But you've got plans to get rid of the wood and smaller stuff this weekend. Thoughts?
Is there trash and garbage and that kind of stuff in your yard?
Yeah, we still got to rake it and go, because I want grass to grow there. We still have to rake it and get stuff out of the area right there, because there's stuff stuck in the, in the ground.
And she has most of it up against the piles, like, there's just, I mean, because of the debris, you can't, and there's weeds that are three foot tall, and, like I say, I...
It's got to be weeded around it, too.
She's, she's made lots of improvement in the last year, so take that into consideration.
So once the wood's gone, when is your plan to get it raked up and finalize that then? Because right now, I know you say you're working around the wood. The wood will be gone this weekend, and then, do you have a timeline, a plan on the rest of the stuff?
When the wood's put, it'll be, it'll be raked up this weekend.
So by the, by the next meeting that we have, which is July 6th, everything should be taken care of then?
And I'll follow up, just to make sure that we're good, and that'll be the end of it, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate you making effort, Lee, and I really do.
Because I've already cleaned up my whole backyard, and you guys had nothing even to do with that, like...
Right. Well, we appreciate you getting it done.
What's July 6th?
Isn't that the next meeting?
That's our project meeting.
Project meeting. Right.
Then you'll all up, and then, more will let another. And thank you for...
Thank you for showing.
Thank you.
I showed up here yesterday. I was confused by the letter, like, I knocked on the door.
Oh, we were in here, but...
Yeah, I thought, because on the door it said, yeah, the meeting was at 6, and I was like, because I had been off of work, and I was like, oh my God, my leg, like...
Thank you.
I was freaking out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, after the end, minutes for the previous meeting at 5:18, 6:01, and 6:14. Are there everybody got copies and so forth? Any additions, corrections, any changes that anybody recommends?
I make a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
One favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, claims warrants. End of the month, May 23, $54,084.63. June 15th meeting, $160,764.59. June 15th meeting, $160,723.81. 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 June 15th meeting, $160,723.81.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, claims warrants. End of the month, May 23, $54,084.63. June 15th meeting, $160,764.59. June 15th meeting, $160,723.81. June 15th meeting, $160,723.81. And I get a motion to approve those, we'll have to do the next one separately.
I move that we accept the end of May and the June 15th meeting's expenditures.
Thank you. The other one is industrial supply for $119.33.
I'll make a motion to approve that, industrial supply.
I'll second.
One favor.
Aye.
I abstain.
Thank you. Bank reconciliation, end of the month, May 23, utilities, $3,507,073. The town is $1,555,881.67. Payroll, $2,723.81. And customer deposit, $35,650.
I'll make a motion to approve the bank reconciliations.
I'll second that.
One favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Payroll warrants for 5, 25, 61, 68, 615, an amount of $30,235.28.
I make a motion to approve the payroll, payroll warrants for the dates.
Okay. Second. One favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Sign those.
Aye.
Someone, someone you don't...
Freshman's, I don't know.
Okay. Keep that one separate from those. Make sure, I mean, those are jinxed. Should I go?
Yeah. It's my question.
I go to the magistrate.
Do I have to do the treatment? Okay. Thank you.
It's... Manager. It's... I don't know. 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 Diana, would you like to start this evening?
I sure can. The new logo on the north side of the park sign in Aspek Park has been replaced, so Fred Huber from Sign Express will probably be sending us an invoice, Kathy, for that. I'm not sure the amount, but it's not usually...
Okay, but it's coming to us?
I believe so.
Okay, and that was what company?
Sign Express.
Sign Express.
Fred Huber. And then the new flags have been ordered for the memorial, and Paul's taking care of that. And we're getting ready for a memorial service on July 4th at 11:00 a.m. sharp, which is the regular time. And to my knowledge, I believe, 30 veterans will receive quilts that day, and so we hope that you can all attend. I have a question about the restrooms, the block walls of the restroom. We had, Brad had said that the blocks that were removed from the Cover Bridge Foundation were usable for part of this project, but he said those blocks were three to four inches thick, but I don't see anybody building a foundation for a bridge that would only use four-inch blocks. So my question is, what happened to the eight-inch blocks that were there? And none of the guys from the utility office said that they had ever laid blocks, and they didn't feel comfortable laying blocks, and that they, Brad McRoy said he was comfortable enough to lay eight-inch blocks up four feet high and then build a wall with pressure-treated lumber, but that's what we're trying to get away from. We don't want wood. So I haven't had a chance to ask the rest of the park board members what their desires are, but my question is, what happened to the eight-inch blocks that the Cover Bridge Foundation was, you know, had begun? So if, and apparently they ordered three to four-inch blocks to go along with the ones that were already, that they already had. So I need to know where those eight-inch blocks were that they used for the Cover Bridge. That's my question.
Who knows?
And what are your feelings about a blocked wall four foot high and then wood, pressure-treated lumber up the rest of the way? I think we're just going to be, myself, I think we're just going to be repeating the same...
Is a metal petition an option?
A metal petition?
You know how you have, like, well, like in the restrooms here?
I suppose we could, but we got to buy them, just the same as we with the wall, the block for the wall. That's my question. Of course, it was coming out of the park board's donation fund, too, so whatever we spend, that's money taken away from other special projects. So anyway, I just need to bring that up, and I would like for you to think about that, and I don't want to spend too much time here until we have our discussion about it with the park board. And that's all I have.
Sir, could you give us some kind of cost opinion on the metal petition?
I could. Just because I do all the schools at Vigo County, I would not recommend metal.
Really?
I would probably do a poly, where they're not going to be able to scribe into it.
Okay.
They've done a lot of changes over the years, too, if they're going to want to go poly, because the metal ones, they just, they kick off the doors, they do a lot of things, too, so.
Okay.
But yeah, I can get a price.
Okay.
I'll need...
You need what we need.
I'll need, yeah, I need what you need. I need measurements, and I'll need, you know...
Okay.
But yeah, we can do the doors and the hardware, and, you know, whatever you would need, and I can get you good on it.
You're not wanting doors, you're just wanting a petition between the urinals, like...
So, so there's not doors on it, it's just...
If we don't put doors on it, we'll have to put shower curtains, and you know how long those last, not very long.
Oh, you're talking about it for showers and stuff? No, no, for the...
For the bathroom stalls, the toilet stalls.
Oh.
Yeah, right now, there's, it's like chipboard between each one, and it, it's, it looks pretty tacky, and, you know, we've got people coming in from all over the nation to camp there, and, and we'd like to promote it better and like it to look nice for people to come and camp, so...
Is there a time that I could come during the day, and you guys could show me what you needed?
Sure. Sure, just let us know.
Okay.
We'll meet you there. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Thanks.
I don't really have much. I was just stopping by because I haven't been over here in a while, and I miss you guys. So, I don't know, I know Mike's been talking to you a little bit about the SRF, and I don't know if he showed you that, or talked in much detail about the PPL that came out.
He sent it to us, but there wasn't a good explanation, I mean...
Okay, so the final, the final's still got an asterisk next to it, but you guys are seventh on the list, I'll pass this around here in a second. It shows the amount that you guys are requesting, it kind of shows, so right now, it still shows you guys have no emerging contaminants. I'm going, we're going to call Camille Miners, Mainers, however you say her last name, with SRF and discuss why nitrates are not on the list of emerging contaminants, because that's...
That's why we're doing this.
That's something that makes you ill, it's not just, like, there's two above you that have manganese listed, and manganese is a secondary contaminant, it doesn't make you sick, it doesn't, I mean, it...
It's nasty.
You do a lot, it can make you sick, I guess, if you look at it that way, but it just looks bad, and it's unsightly, and, but it is what it is. So we'll talk and see what's going on with that. But I would note, so you guys are seventh, and you guys serve about 1,000 people. Number one on the list is Huntington, they serve about 1,000 people, so it's reasonable that they'll get some grant funding. Evansville's second on the list, they have a ton of, they're requesting $200 million. Obviously, that's not grant money, that's, they're going to SRF, that's not even a subsidized loan, that's just a straight SRF loan. But, so you're, you're seventh on the list, but you have Evansville above you, you have Frankton, that's about 1,800, Kewaunaw, which is about 600, Gossips, about 800, and Northwest Jasper, Regional Water District, about 3,800. So if you include the amount of money that you won, the top seven have requested $275 million in funds, 200 million, you can just write Evansville off the list. I mean, they're, they're going to get their money, and all loan money, anyway. But I, you guys, seventh, seems like it's not great, but good, I guess, but I guess I would point that that's extraordinary, considering there is currently 75-ish communities and utilities on this requesting $880 million in funding. So you guys are definitely, you're going to get some kind of funding, I don't know how much it is or anything like that at this point, but you guys can pass it around. I find it interesting to see what communities have asked for money that are close by. I like seeing, you know, Evansville's this, not the same boat, but they're in a similar boat, they, $200 million, a lot of money for them, and they've requested that, so you're not the only community that's having issues with their water system, you have the community that has contaminants and that kind of thing, and not the only one close by, there's several close by communities that are on that list, and that's just drinking water at this point. There's another list just like that for wastewater, and it's got $1.2 billion worth of need on it. So in the state of Indiana, just an SRF program, communities ask for a little over $2.2 billion just in this application round, so, you know, just, you're not the only one, I know, you don't, nobody wants to be in the boat that you guys need to do an $8, $9 million project, but everybody has the same problem as you guys. You can see communities' user rates on there to kind of compare where you guys stand versus other communities, pre and post, so there's your current user rate, and then there's a hypothetical, if, if you have to borrow it all, what would your user rate be as well for all those communities? Just, I find it interesting, you guys may think it's boring and not want to look at it, but it's stuff we deal with. So that's where we're at, we did talk to SRF as well, because I do know that you guys obviously have the sludge issue down at the wastewater treatment plant, and SRF will, you can tie projects together if they can be determined to be of need together. So long story short, waste, we got to get, you're going to create waste with the drinking water process, if we're doing the RO system, it's going to pull something out that we've got to get rid of. The plan right now is to pump that to the wastewater treatment plant, hydrologically speaking, minus capacity. Sludge speaking, you guys are beyond capacity, because you guys don't want to have a sludge process as part of your wastewater treatment process, other than manage and dispose of it. It can be, we talked to SRF already, if the case is needed, that if we can determine the reason you need to do any work down at the treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, that is, is if it's the result of any work at the water treatment plant, it can all be bundled together in one application, PER, or, well, itself, it does not have to be broken, I've ended to funding cycles and that kind of thing. So I know you guys have already talked to, with you Mac and...
Blue River.
Blue River. Sorry, they called me today and asked some questions about some pumps down there, so Blue River, so, but if you guys are in need of funding to do that kind of thing, we can certainly help do an amendment to the PER to get that included, if, if funding is an issue, or if there's more need down there than you're just kind of doing, I don't know the whole scope of the project of, than addressing some of the sludge issues down there. If you're only doing a portion of it, and there's some more need in five or 10 years, it could be worth looking at, trying to roll that all into one as part of this, and we can write it in such a way that it can be rolled into the same loan application. Don't have to do that, just throwing it out there, just so you guys are aware that we can roll together if the need is there, so. Until we find out exactly from SRF, grant money-wise, which won't happen until after, the 1st of July at the earliest, we're just kind of holding until we find out what's going on, that we can get...
Would adding that hurt the chances of getting this?
Ah, I don't, it definitely doesn't hurt your chances of getting that in any, in any way. I don't know that it helps. It could, I don't, it definitely won't hurt, it won't, it won't take you from seven down to eight, that's for sure.
Yeah, just, I talked to Eric a little bit about it this week, and doing other stuff, too, so.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know what you guys are thinking, but I think we, we don't have, I don't remember how much that stuff is going to cost down there, 80,000's the number in my head, something like that.
Could be your best.
And I don't know, we don't have that, we're going to have to, you know, we talked about me trying to get some grant money to help with it, but if we could just put it into this...
Well, if, if there's a, that one bed is plugged off, I've done it there a day, But there's a, that one bed is plugged off. I've done it every day, and it's very little moving through that southeast. There's hardly any, any, I mean, the whole thing was standing on it. So that one bed probably won't be as terrible if any of the, any of the sludge is in there, if we can get it out. I don't know.
So, but that's a different issue than, than lumping this into the treatment program.
Yes, I, I mean, I don't, I don't totally understand the, I mean, I, I, when they talk about it, I have moments where I'm kind of like, okay, I kind of get it. And then the next day, I, I don't totally get it. I know there's sludge issues. I know there's a bed issue. I, I know those things are somewhat related. I know that the phosphate elimination process is adding sludge. I, I got that much. I'm just wondering, because this is actually gonna happen fairly quickly, and, and as far as the funding goes. And if we just add another 100,000 on it, and we're gonna, I think we're gonna qualify for quite a bit of grant here. And they're willing just to, okay, another 100,000 in grant to you. Maybe we could get some of this sewer stuff taken care of, this fall even.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's where, so the bed is, is clogging or getting fouled because of sludge. So you guys are at that, the way it would be written is you guys are adding 100% sludge capacity. Hydraulically, you guys have 25%, 30%, whatever the number is. I can't remember exactly. But we would say you guys are at sludge capacity, and there's already been some premature damage to said bed. And they cannot take any more sludge at all. You, so we were, we, our plan was to send all that down there. We looked at it just from a hydraulic standpoint. This, I guess I'm talking like if you guys were SRF. We were gonna send it all there hydraulically. We did a quick cursory check. Everything's good. They're hitting their, their primary numbers as far as hydraulic capacity goes. But this amount of sludge that we're gonna create here is gonna cause a problem down there. So they're no longer, like, we can't take it. Can't take it to Rockville. You can't take the sludge to, you know, that's Rockville's closest. Rockville or Montezuma yourself, business clog. We can't, you know, we'd have to build another treatment plant here, which is gonna cause a million, I'll just hold in, a whole number, say a million dollars. But if we take it down there, you know, we need to do, let's do some pipe, a quick piping modification to pipe it into a steel tank of some kind, so we can decant it out, put it into the, uh, Blue River Technologies Geo, Geo Filter Bags, whatever little process gets finalized out there. That will address the sludge, but the damage that has been kind of done by the sludge now, we need to redress it with this bed. I think we can warrant it in such a way that we'll be completely truthful that it is because of this project, and that it gets, and we can roll it into the project.
Well, the other selling point on this too is that if we use this method now to fix it, prior to the, prior to the water treatment going in, that's gonna be cheaper than trying to come back and re-engineer it on the, on the backside and fix it.
These, even if the sewer, if, if, if we wanted to say, well, let's do the sewer separately, it would be a year from now before we'd be able to go to SRF. Cause SRF does once a year, right Dustin?
They do the rate, the application once a year, so March, they move it up to March.
Uh, then they, they do their scoring and then, you know, summertime. So it would be, we'd have to wait a while before we could really do anything substantial at the treatment plant, because we don't have money to do a lot of substantial stuff down there.
And one thing that I did ask SRF is if we could do separate, like, if we could do a ban.
Yeah, we could do a ban.
Do a ban, you can call it, it'd be one project in an umbrella under SRF, but they allow you to kind of break funds off, I guess you'd call it. And we could, I'd have to ask and see if we could fast track that work down there, because you guys are having heck of a time just keeping it going. And I know that's, water's priority, but we've got a little time with water. If we fast, we can do work on both at the same time, but fast track that stuff so that we comply with all of SRF's stuff and work with Blue River to get that going at a much quicker pace than the water. Still working on the water with another different group of people in our office, but fast track that, pay for it with a ban, potentially, which is just your bond anticipation note. And then you pay for that. And then when that's, when you close on the SRF loan after the water is bid, the water project bids, then the proceeds from that closing would pay off that ban. So you get a bank short-term loan essentially was, was what the ban is.
That's a, that would, that would work.
I, I'm just trying to think of ways to fast track, because I know that's a huge issue.
You could be doing that work down there this fall.
That would get, that would hit the fall deadline versus the water. We're probably looking at a spring.
Yeah, Eric, we have to, we can't really close on SRF till we bid the water, which would be spring.
But, but a ban, you'd have a little, some minor costs with issuance, issuance of a ban probably, but unless you have that kind of funds on hand, an emergency fund, this is getting more into financial stuff and so we're speaking a little-
We could borrow from any utility maybe, but we've hit the utilities, other utilities pretty heavy, so.
But you would, you would have, you'd say you borrow from your, you pay it off local funds, then when SRF closed, you'd pay back, you'd replenish your local funds with that money.
If I'm being honest.
I'm just, just trying to think of ways to, that one is, just to keep it going, because you don't want that one to stall out the loan.
But doing it with SRF right now might have some advantages.
Trying to, so for you guys, I don't want to sway one way or the other.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
I didn't realize entirely what, because I know Eric, he sent me a copy of the email he sent to SRF.
Yeah, I thought it was-
I totally understand the implications of it. He, he explained to me, but now I see now there's a, I think there'd be a, a, a good time advantage for you to, to do it.
I think if you go to a, a different either grant or another RD loan or something, the process drags out too long.
And you're already, you're already scoring really good here.
Yes.
So, so if we throw it in with that, it's, 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 it's less than 10%. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a small amount in the overall project, so it doesn't feel like a lot.
Yes, I mean, that's, so that, the listed amount on there's 8.3 million dollars. So if you say 100, say 80,000, that's 1% of the total project cost. If it's 8,000, I mean, I mean, you say 80,000, a big allotment right now. It's, it's a lot, big amount of money anytime, but in the grand scheme of the project for SRF.
It's not, it's not a big job that-
It's not much on there, play first now. It's not much because I'm here guys, play it. Just make it sound good when I said it.
Well, we could go ahead and do the sludge removal on the, in conjunction with the water, and then go back for the bed repairs or replacement or whatever.
You could do it in a three-step pro, I mean, I guess that's what, you could, you could just do the sludge with, that, you know, throw it in there and, and do it this way, and just do the sludge portion, which is the Blue River Technology stuff. You could do it all as one, do the Blue River's, I'll call the sludge the Blue River stuff. The bed issue and all, whatever else you want to do down there as this. Or you could do the sludge, do the water, come back in a year from now and do the rest of the work. Or you could try to roll it all into, all of it into this and do the Blue River stuff now, get so that that, the sludge is getting addressed right now. And then you slow up just a little bit on any other work down there, and you do it kind of simultaneously as the water treatment plant. That's a possibility as well.
I'd kind of like to see it all come together in one package, you know, get, get the water treatment, wastewater treatment straight. Get it working correct, get it up to capacity. So once, once we get the water treatment in, in place, we don't have any problems. We can just run straight down the way it should be.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not an advocate for spending more money, I guess.
All that's gotta be done down there. Sludge's gotta be removed. We gotta have it. Get the bag going. Yeah, that, that's, I think that's the first thing.
Yeah.
And until that's stopped, we don't know whether that'll ever clean up or not.
Yeah. So I guess, not, the not knowing, I guess, is the, the kind of the, the question mark. You could assume that the bed is, I don't like using the word soon, but you could make the assumption that the bed is going to need significant work, probably replacement or major rehab. Here, mark that money into whatever, if you want to go with, say we lump it all in with SRF. You could say, we're going to do that. We, we're gonna do the sludge. We're gonna replace this single bed out of here. And you're up and add, you can always go to SRF after the fact and say, we did, we'll call it phase one, sludge phase one. We did slate, phase one at the plant, made everything come back to life. We don't need to do that. SRF here is, we're not gonna use this 40,000 dollars, whatever the number is. We're not gonna use it. You don't need to borrow it. SRF says, are you sure? Thank you very much. And you don't have to borrow it. You didn't borrow it. You don't pay any interest on it. It just go, that portion just goes away. You say, thank you for everything you gave us. But if you do need to use it, it's there. You can go that route. And I would also add, I know you guys, the plant's not that old, but if there's anything at the plant that is not to your guys' liking, or if it needs down there that you don't, you don't have now, or some, you know, a piece of equipment is, is not as reliable as it once was, or anything like that, it could be added in as well. We could, most anything, we could say is a capacity issue. I mean, short of there's no parking, you know, there's no garage or something like that, you could say, you know, everything else, if we, if we weren't in such a way that we're still truthful, I wouldn't say we're relying or anything like that. But you, most anything down at the treatment plant can be warranted and, and given enough facts to say it's capacity based. Not saying go spend more money just because it can be there, but if there's, there's something that you're, you guys, they've been pointing around with, or saying, you really hate this, or we, you know, it'd really nice to be having a, you know, we get a need down there, a sampler or something like that. I know that came up years ago, but it's not needed. But if they've really been on your back or something, say, you know, a sampler would be, be nice to give us that added capacity to that process. We've got, we're dealing with more water now. We don't have the time to be taking samples or whatever. You know, we could, we can work with SRF to try to get that funded. Again, the worst thing they say is, you know, that'd sound like a capacity issue to us, and we won't cover that. There was a lot to digest and take in.
Well, thank you.
But if you guys have any thoughts, I guess, sorry to interject a little time. But if you have any thoughts, come back to the next meeting and discuss it some more. But I guess SRF will need to know sooner than later. So, I mean, I can plan on 10 of them, projects meeting in July, if you prefer that, or.
Yeah, we'll have to have some discussions towards that, huh?
Well, yeah, I mean, because I don't know, it comes, it circles back around to the, I, I, we're gonna have to either get a grant or borrow money to pay for what's needed to be done down there. And we're sort of already, yeah, in my mind, we're already kind of lined up, and we've got a, we've got a bank that's willing to loan us money for something else. And they're like, oh, if you want to throw the sewer stuff in there, yeah, go ahead and throw that sewer stuff in there. So you can come back to us, if you don't want to do it now, you can come back to us. But, but this, I just, you know, this process is, is, and if we did it separately, we'd have to go through, we might have to go through sewer, I don't know. But we, we'd have to get it, it would get its own score, because it's a, and we might not be as high up on the, on the priority list. And I'm kind of thinking maybe, I mean, I may be thinking wrong here. I don't know, Dustin, but we're, we're kind of high up there. And especially since I think they're wrong about the, the-
I think they're wrong with the contaminants.
Yeah, so that might move us up a little bit. So if we're, and the higher you are in that list, the, the, you're, you're gonna get all, you're gonna get as much as they can get you. So I, I kind of feel like maybe we ought to, I mean, we talked about it more, maybe it's projects meeting to make sure, because I didn't really understand it that much until tonight. Uh, maybe I'm not, and maybe I'm still missing something here, but I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the downside of it would be.
Doesn't make any sense to replace the front tires and not replace the back tires.
Well, and if, especially if, if you've already got somebody willing to give you some help on buying the front tires, well, let's throw the back in there too. Okay, fine. Because I, I mean, it could be possible that they do this in a way that if they give us enough grant out of this, that they're covering all of it.
So if we decide on this, can we just make like a vote tonight and say, this is what we want to do?
Well, we may want to have another, I mean, I, you know, we, we do have a projects meeting in a couple of weeks. I don't know if there's anything else to know. I just, I didn't understand it. I, I, I did, I, I-
My only, I mean, I don't want to rush you guys into making decisions. My only concern with the next meeting, it's in July, and there's a potential that they could issue the, the final, final version of that after, prior to your, because it's July 6th, you said. Prior to, I don't know that they will, but they could issue the final prior to July 6th. And then making amendment will be a little tougher, but not impossible. But I don't want to press you guys.
I think we're all on board with the same thing.
I know it came kind of quick, but.
So we just say, well, let's, let's investigate this and
go for it.
I think we, I mean, I don't know if there's downside, other than if we wait and they issue the final, it might be too late to do it.
And if we don't do it now, then we have to have the whole system done over through the sewer side, and we may not score. You know, we're close.
What's the worst that could happen is we get turned down for that amount of money, and then we're right back where we are right now. I mean, so, or if they give us too much money, we can always get something back.
Yeah, it's just P, it's just part of your PR, so.
Yeah. I mean, the only downside, that's for me, I just have to do more work, so.
We, but we have to get all that stuff done anyway, because we can't, we can't, you know, we can't move a, you can move a chair inside the building, but you can't do anything down there without going through IDIM to get, to get construction design release or whatever. Got to change our permit and everything else. So we're gonna have to do all that anyway. I mean, I, I just hadn't, I said, I hadn't thought about the implications of it. So, but I do think there's some good advantage to, to.
I, I think we need to move on.
Okay.
Yeah. We, we gotta move on. And that's, if we can get more free money. I like free money.
If there's any chance at all that they could improve it, I mean, there's, like I said, we got nothing to lose. I mean-
I think, I mean, it was from somebody at SRF. I think Eric ran into Blackpool or somebody.
Yeah, it wasn't just like a low-level project.
No, it was somebody, I mean, he's, they were like, yeah, that's fine. So.
She's in charge of the drinking water program, I believe. So she's, she makes the final call on anything we submit, change orders. She's the, the go-to.
We might have a motion to, yeah, to proceed with it and give them the okay and make it.
I make a motion.
We can forward with this. So I'll work on the PER amendment into SRF. That includes the, the sludge stuff. We've got the emails and everything with Blue River. And then just to be clear, we want to include the rehabilitation, replacement cost of southeast and, correct? Just to make sure that I get it all.
And there's some, isn't there some, now, does the Blue River thing take care of the problem with the phosphate tank? Because there's, I thought, I thought Bruce said we needed some new piping too. Or is that just the new piping that goes to the-
It does new piping to, to-
Yeah, okay.
Yep, it's, I actually talked to them earlier today about it. They called me about some pump questions. So we'll use that. We'll get, just everything submitted as quickly as we can and let you know when we're here.
Thank you.
Sorry, just bring it on these.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
If you need anything.
I guess it's, it, it, you don't, it's good that you're high on this list.
Depends where you live.
Be better if 200 million Evansville went ahead of you, but they're not gonna get any grant money.
They won't get any grant money. So they'll get all of that loan money. But I will say Evansville's been on that list for three years. So that doesn't, just because they're high on the list doesn't mean they're ready to go with that, that project either. Or I guess it's probably several projects, but.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, feel free to email call. Anytime, I'll be happy to help you guys out.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks. Go on.
Forty-eight calls last month, three arrests. We talked about the ordinance violation with Ashley. I reached out to Rick Patton this week about his vacant lots that needed mowed, and I didn't get by all of them today, but it appears that, he, he told me they've gone on, and some of them haven't. So, the 1018 North Washington Street, she in progress there. I don't think she ever filed a notice. Did she, Kathy?
By the post office?
Yeah.
No, she didn't file an appeal. They just started cleaning it and, you know.
So.
I think he did, a trailer of brushes, it gone? I didn't notice this week. I think he come and inquired about the compost area last Friday.
As far as the job bid came down tonight at 6 o'clock for the police department, you should have one sealed bid up there. The bid packet was offered to CCS Buildings. Walbash Overhead Door requested to do the whole project. And then after I gave them the specs, they said, no thanks. So, and then the original, first bid we had from A1 Construction, he's bid again. So you got two bids for the overhead door in front of you?
Maybe copies of those, and then here's the bin.
There is a significant price difference in them.
On the door.
On the door.
Let's see. Most of this was your stuff. Your picture is in your invitations of closure.
I think he was gonna provide proof of insurance there too.
Yeah, right here. $4,450.
Nothing's changed from the, his prior bid. It's just we had to go through this second process. So he just sealed it up. And then after talking with Scott, we can, we can purchase the door outright ourselves instead of having the contractor include that, which could save us a little bit of money on the green scheme of things.
Be paid in three payments, 8150 upon approval, 8150 after concrete is finished, and the rest of it when it's upon completion.
And he couldn't be here tonight, but he did say if there was any, if you guys needed anything additional, you'd be very glad to answer questions or...
Thought to comment on the bid for the construction of the garage. Money wise...
We're getting, I mean...
It definitely needs to be done.
It needs to be done, and he's the only one that seems to be available, willing to do a job this size, from what it sounds like.
And the other side of it is, it's not gonna be cheaper if we wait. Price is gonna go up, continue to go up, and if I wanted to sell, it's gonna... Even the Amish are back up around here. Still, if they don't know a year or two, uh, get something done.
Which he already went through, Kathy, the money, maybe we took, have him talk?
We haven't discussed that at all.
Get him in. So options? General?
You'll have to look at your, in general, or to spend out of, what, CCD? We just have to do an additional appropriation?
Yeah, I don't know how much, I mean, you've got...
It's not a big balance there either.
No, it doesn't, I mean, you get CCD, your rainy day funds, you gotta spend it.
I have to look myself in the eyes.
Yeah, Edith, Edith's doing pretty good. Probably wanna save public safety at this point, given, I said, you probably wanna save public safety.
Yeah, 'cause he's already got appropriations out of there this year.
Edith, would be, any utility use? Parker? Is it, is, I don't know, is it all police, is it all?
Well...
That's secondary.
Okay.
I think my location's gonna change.
Right, you're, yeah, I see, yeah, there might be, if he's...
Can you remember?
What do we got? Sometimes we're transferring to cover what we've discussed last night.
Yeah, maybe we could, yeah, why don't we, 'cause that might justify it.
Table it and get more information for the July 6th meeting.
Figure out where to pay it for him.
Are you good with that?
I'm absolutely good with that.
Yeah. 'Cause that would make it a little...
Yes.
Did you let all the water hatch?
Yeah, I understand.
That's the stuff you think.
It's okay.
I think that's what this, yeah, ten thousand.
Anything else, y'all?
Oh, I do have one other thing. I guess I just need your opinion, uh, is it Sparklight, Kathy? Is that, or have they changed names again?
It's still currently Sparklight, aren't you?
They do. They do.
Yeah. So currently, we're month to month on our internet, and we're paying a hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. She's, I reached out to him this week, and if we just sign a one-year contract, it'll drop it to ninety-four, ninety-nine. If we sign a two-year contract, they go to eighty-nine, ninety-nine. Sign a three-year contract, which as far as they go, it's eighty-four, ninety-nine. So roughly, even with a one-year contract, we're gonna save twenty-eight bucks a month, twenty-nine dollars, if, if you wanna enter a contract with them, but, uh, clearly a decision that I'm leaning on you for there.
You're serviced pretty good.
It's the only service we really get.
There's not a lot of options, that's the problem.
Right.
Sparklight has overall been the best system I've had since I've been here, been twenty, twenty years plus now, so... They're, they are the most reliable. When they first started out, they were a little sketchy, but they've really come a long ways, and I think they're probably about the most stable in the local area. Like I said, there's not a lot of options.
I'm not experiencing outages per se that were... The only, the only complaint I have about them is the price just keeps going up, up and up.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
It's like there's no cap on it, so...
So, we can at least lock in the price for up to three years.
Say this is a little money. Be nice to say so. I mean, we have to, you have to have it, and there is not a lot of options here to begin with, so...
So just roughly, three years is gonna save thirty-seven dollars a month. I mean, that's pretty significant, and the overall percentage of the cost of it, so...
Thousand bucks over three years.
So...
I just didn't wanna enter a contract without your permissions.
I don't have, I don't think there's an issue with it. Saving us money, we're gonna have it anyways.
Yeah, we can't operate without.
Exactly. It's a need.
I'm trying, that's why they can make it go up and up.
I'll make a motion.
He goes there.
That we spend some more, well, I guess less money, and do the three years.
I'll say it, yeah. All right, all right.
All right.
There you go.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Skip.
No, you got Wendy.
Uh, six rooms for the month, uh, takes up to seventy for the year. Uh, you've, the picture, the new truck is floating around with a miskey unit. When it gets here, more information to follow on that, uh, what we're, we're doing once it gets here. Before we put it in service, hopefully, we don't meet the year mark, but, uh, we're rapidly approaching that. I think it'll be about a week ago before that happens. So the matter, anything else is working good. The door, door to the firehouse, the handle's broken again. I don't know who's yanked and banged on it, but, uh, they managed to screw come out again on that, so...
It just needs to be replaced.
I've called Professional Glass, and they're just gonna look down and order new parts.
Perfect. And then, uh, would like to see if we can get some quotes to replace the lights in the meeting room area. There's, uh, we've been arguing this for quite some time, we've put it in bay for a while, but, uh, they're starting, the, the ballast is starting to go bad, and we've got one that's not working, and one that glows like a dim yellow, and... It takes time to upgrade, do some LEDs, so, uh, if I get some quotes and then prevent that later on, that'd be all right. Try to get those lights in the meeting bay, the kitchen, uh, replaced.
Yes.
Now, we did the bay, that made a huge difference, so, I would like to, uh, in the meeting room as well, so... Probably do some ceiling touch-ups around the end of that, but, uh, we'll cross that bridge when we get here. But, uh, on that, that's all I got. Appreciate everything y'all's given.
Thank you.
So does he need to get quotes for lighting? How does that work?
Well, the bay lights, I think, did you guys, does the fire department purchase, or how did that work out?
We, we bought it, and we asked for forgiveness, and then Kathy gave some money back.
Okay.
Try, try to avoid it this time, 'cause, uh, I know our budget this year was a little short on the firehouse, so they, 'cause they'd obligated some money elsewhere, so we didn't really have a full budget per se, so we're halfway through the year. I don't think we spent a whole lot of that yet, so...
It's still kinda nip and tuck.
Well, that's why I'm asking now.
There's some money in public safety left that the fire department has appropriated, because you've already paid the fire truck loan out of it.
So, I, it wouldn't be, but I can't see it being that much, so, some LED lights, four lights, and... And we'll do the work ourselves, so it'll be at just the cost of the lights.
We got it, we'll find it.
I'll go and get some quotes Kathy for the...
It's just, that's a, like, these reset lights, just pull them out, put the LED in there.
That's all I got.
They did it all last time in the bay. They did it in the bay, and it's, I mean...
So, we, you got something, is there?
What?
You got something we could use there, do you?
Um, uh, not, maybe, but, actually, it's not really my forte. I mean, lights are really not, we do a little, we dabble, we dabble.
Dabble?
Yeah.
We don't want dabbled lights.
No, I know.
We want good lights.
Yeah, I think you have an idea.
All right, let's get back to the agenda. We got a resolution two zero two three, day show six, day show one, and to reconcile all of the accounts, so none of them's in a negative for the budget prep.
I'm just laughing at that. Gonna show somebody your work, so let's get, it's okay, I understand.
So, we, I'll make a motion for a resolution two zero, two three dash zero six dash zero one.
Second?
Sure.
Home favor?
Aye.
You have a copy, you wanna sign? I thought you might. Then we got an email from H W C about the...
A B asset management.
Yeah. And that's, if we ever wanna get any money from the state, we're gonna have to do it then. It's easier to do it every year than going back and have it.
And then, I, I, I was looking at that, 'cause I, I think it's every so many years, you have to do a bigger upgrade.
A major.
And then, in between, you can do the smaller ones, and then, you gotta do, and so, I mean, I don't, I don't know any different. I, we have to trust them to tell that they're...
But then, plus with our funding for the roads to be paved, that all has to come out of there, and everything has to be rerated. So, yeah, so if you'd like to do, apply for funds for 2024, that has to be completed by December 31st.
We didn't do it for a couple of years, is that right?
We did it last year, but it only cost us, well, to have it there, fifteen, forty-seven, fifteen.
Yeah.
And then, we did get, we crossed its money to do paving this year, which will happen, yeah, to come. And I think we can do, under five hundred thousand, I think, or something.
I'm thinking, I calculated on the low side.
They should start at the end of each month.
Do what?
They should start paving at the end of this month.
They said in July they would start. Unless somebody else come in with something different, that's the last I heard.
Well, they said, I don't think, they said end of June, first of July.
Yeah, but then...
There's not a permit, our big state said, yeah.
Yeah, I just know the last they said was July. Ronnie Shepard sent that email.
And one of the things from that last meeting, and I was supposed to do is contact Big Mac and tell him that we've got the projects going on, just as a courtesy thing, and I did do that. And women said, what's that mean to us? I said, well, you may have to go out of your way at times.
Yes, ma'am.
She said, thanks for the heads up, she don't know what she's gonna do with it yet. Long as you got the heads up, that's good. So, can I have a motion to...
I move that we go ahead and, uh, get with, uh...
He said he'd say...
Update the payment.
Update the payment. Kathy already moved the money, so you... I saw that.
That's, that's it, I'll say.
Yeah, home favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay.
Please second that, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Kathy, they have to forgive us.
Well, I guess maybe it went the wrong way.
Relief, maybe, is a better word, huh?
Yeah, that's the wrong word.
No.
Yeah.
Because Karen, that's how Karen was, so...
Oh, okay.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, that's like real Karen. Okay. Yeah, good, so you got the appropriation then too.
And she has made some recommendations to make it feasible to give somebody, so... And I think she's really serious about giving it to us.
I am, I'm done. I'm old, my body's tired.
You got my sample, please.
I think I've done enough years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Well, I'll make a motion that we call her recommendations on the, the money and the hours, and go ahead and, uh, contact Alexis Cox to see if she wants to do the job.
Sure. Home favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next. John, I just wanted to know if you, uh, had gotten any farther on the, the Narcon box?
So I've sent, I've submitted all the paperwork.
Okay.
But I have not heard back from, and I don't know how many people submit those. It's, we're probably actually to the point I need to follow up with.
Do they give like a grant on that, or is that something we...
It's free, but yeah, it's a grant through...
I don't know if that's something we need to pay out of our, uh, what is it, the reparation fund for the narcotic thing?
No, there'll, it'll be at no cost, as, they just ask to use our properties to, to hang the box. They'll supply all the material, just our labor too.
What is it?
The Narcan dispenser that we talked about.
Other than that, uh, the last couple of times I've been, cemetery, cemetery looks pretty good.
Yeah.
Still needs some rain.
Yeah.
Work on that. That's all I got. That's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Only thing I got is Kathy sent us an email long ago that that, the new truck has a recall on it already. And I have taken care of getting that arranged to Wilson and Terry, and Clinton, when the truck comes in, they have the part and it can be done that quick. So it's about a twenty-minute job, it's, the tray for the battery has gotta be changed. The scary thing is it can be setting and catch on fire. So, I don't think we want in the building too long down there with the luck we're having.
Right, you know, we need to try directly to Wilson's.
So anyway, that's, it's a matter of, calling and taking it to Wilson's to be repaired.
You're not gonna have to go, you're not gonna pay your own dollars.
Go straight to Wilson's.
I think that's all I can tell. I did talk to Blue River today. He's still working on a code, looking at a manual system versus an automatic, automatic system. And he's got a tank, a twenty-five-hundred gallon tank, that's, he's had very good shape, but they bought it salvage that would work in that system, so, anyway. We're a long ways from ready to put a tank together. So, that's all I got.
Yeah, thank you.
Been through the cemetery, about it today too. Just go take a drive.
I don't have anything, John?
No, I just skipped my firehouse door I was gonna talk about.
See how it is.
I just wanted to thank John for, I noticed that the trailer is gone that was there, so thank you very much for mentioning that. That's, I saw it's out of the way. And then also, I wanted to ask is, does this building have, or is it supposed to have an AED, an AED in place?
Alive, an AED?
We discussed that at one time.
I don't remember that we did.
Probably. We saw, I was just curious too, if you guys ever need, you know, if there was ever a need for one, it's not to raise something else, but, I mean.
I don't, I don't know how, I don't know of any requirement that places have of, but obviously, you know, I don't know how much they cost, so.
File them up, sure.
I mean, that's up to you.
And it would have like a case, door opens, sets off an alarm.
What do you?
Yeah. Do you have to be? We do solve.
It talks you all the way through. And anybody can use it. It tells you how to put the pads on, it tells.
So would you put it out where anybody that uses the facility could get to it? Yes, that may be.
Joke about your age.
Might be, it was close to me, like right there. We would hope that we never had to use it.
Were you two left in that? There's definitely someone.
Hey, I'm just glad I was able to live this long.
So it was just something, just to bring up.
That's a good thought.
It's a good one.
We got one more thing, and I apologize, but this is where my brain went, and I've been meaning to talk to Diana, and I haven't yet, but so we have the cameras in Reader Park, we was able to identify individuals that were doing the property damage with the floors. The rock has been dumped up there, they're supposed to be here tomorrow to repair their damage, and they both came and fessed up to it, so just another example of the cameras doing their job. Now, with that being said, those are the, that's the only one that can't hit the network. But, maybe something with the park board, because we have a camper and we camp a lot as a family. And I was kind of astonished by the people that travel around and just work out of their camp. But to do that, you have to have internet service. So, something looking forward into the future, I think that's something we ought to consider with our camping area. Compared, maybe when you pay to check in or whatever, you're giving a password to the, a guest network. We could also utilize our cameras off that same network because it's at the same location and offer that as a part of our camping package.
At one time, we discussed that and thinking it would be a good idea to have it there because of the vac station. If there was a problem there, then they would have internet there at the vac station as well to troubleshoot.
And I spoke with the guys about that, and they acted like it would take lots and lots of dollars and upgrades to the system to be able to utilize.
Really?
You know.
It's somewhere though.
You talked to what?
Our guys.
Okay.
That they don't have anything down there that, currently, that can utilize any internet.
I thought that we had to have a laptop down there.
No, we have to have a phone line down there for some reason, but I've never understood that.
Your phone line dial the reverse number, when it sets off the alarm down there, that's what comes across the phone line, that's the reason for the phone.
Okay.
If I recall right.
At the vac station.
I would, but that was.
So we could have an internet, internet line through the landline? There you go.
You could put Starlink up there, probably, if you wanted that, that would cover both ends of the park. But that'd be a hundred bucks a month.
So, should we get some quotes before we start planning next year's budget?
Probably a good idea.
I just think that, you know, going into the future. It's something to consider.
Are you gonna get us a quote?
Well, the more amenities that we offer there.
Two birds, one stone.
The more campers we're gonna get, you know?
But I don't think it's just a network you open up like the library or, you know. Hanging out there, I mean, it's a park, I understand, but, you know, there's people there twenty-four hours a day sitting on the bench of the library.
So they would get a code when they checked in?
Like a guest pass.
Just like a.
Like you do at a hotel.
Yeah. That was the other thing that I was gonna mention too. I was in the Dollar General one day, and there were some people that had come in and they were like asking the ladies behind the counter, they were like, "Is there camping around?" And the ladies were like, "I don't know, I don't know." And so I chimed in and I said, "We do actually have camping," and it was like on a Friday night. And I was like, "But I don't think that you can, how, how does that work? If someone wanted to camp, saying they pull in on a Friday night, are they just out of luck? Or do they have to wait till Monday? Or is there a signage that they know?"
There's a sign down there, and we had signage there, where, you know, with a phone call, a phone number that they would call and would be the guy, whoever's on call.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then the guy on call can register them in.
Okay.
That's the original, that was the original plan.
Yeah, but I don't think we.
But since then, a lot of, a lot of times, Paul and I drive, just happened to drive by there and see a camper, so we stop, "Hey, do you need anything? Have you checked in?" You know, and there's supposed to be a sign that they put in their window, their camper window, to let you know that they are registered.
They lost your spy.
Their permit.
You lost the spy.
A lot of them call Penny's number, or they call the office. Sometimes there are some that pull in there, but somebody sees them and then.
Okay.
They're notified.
Okay, well, they were just so unfamiliar up there at the Dollar General, and I didn't know any better, and I felt kinda stupid that I didn't know how to direct them, and so, you know, I mentioned Rockville and.
To go to Dollar General and say, "Hey, I understand some people came in and we'll let them know how to do that, how to go about that."
But also, going forward with that, we pay the Indiana Office of Technology to do stuff for our website, so why don't we incorporate the camping fee so people can pay on one?
It is on there, it's on their website.
They can actually pay on one?
And register, log in and register in there?
It took me months to get it lined out, but it's on there.
Is that on the signage?
That's what I was gonna say, even if it was on the signage.
No, it's not.
I'm proud of you.
Military fees you can pay on there, foundations. Dairy plots. It took me a long time, but I finally got it.
Let me write it down on my list, and our next meeting, I will bring that up so that we can.
Would it be worthwhile to put some flyers out and leave some at Dollar General on each gas station and
Yep.
And if anybody goes in and asks, instead of them trying to tell you, "Do this," just hand them a piece of paper and say, "There you go."
I think we got what we got into before, because when Rob was town marshal, he took copies of the permit, Penny brought us some. But I don't, that's another thing we'd have to incorporate in the, on call, 'cause none of those are aware of.
Oh, the new guys are not aware, okay.
Are those boxes locked, or can they just put wheel and plug in?
No, they're supposed to be, the main breaker stays on for the main meter, but then those outlets have to each be charged.
Yeah.
That's something I'm gonna think about, 'cause I don't, from a financial standpoint, I don't know that it makes sense to call somebody in and pay them.
Well, that's where it kinda got hairy before.
For overnight.
Yeah.
Maybe instead of flyers made for the campers, you could make flyers for the towns employed, the employees that work in the town to educate them so that they do know how to direct people to it.
They're already made, we already have flyers.
It's not really, the camping fee doesn't cover our overtime rate to have the guys get called in to hook the electric up for them to camp.
Listen for a small fee. I mean, I could go with the.
Can't they just do it on their last work day, go by and split the breaker or whatever?
That's what we normally do. When people call in and they prepay, we make out a work card, so on Friday we need electric at Reader Park. And the restrooms, we check them, have them ready.
Well, could you increase the fee if I just come in town and last minute?
Last minute without having reservations.
Don't have reservations, so recharge an extra.
You have to change that ordinance.
I'm just.
Dizzle ten bucks for.
Next, somebody's gonna have to get called out.
Cheaper if you.
Yeah, if you make the reservation online ahead of time.
Or something, maybe.
I don't know, just thinking out loud, but.
Okay.
Well, we might have some people that are just driving through and they're like, "I wonder if there's camping here, hmm, let's just stay here."
We've been trying to get the DNR to get us some signage on the highway, and Mike Askin has contacted people and they're supposed to be doing that. And I look into trying to get the DNR to include our camping in their camping flyer that they put out. But because it's a private campground, they don't do that, because the DNR doesn't receive any money from the camping. So that's the reason. But I've been, I have been working on that, but I'm making notes here.
Oh, and the sign at the firehouse is fixed.
Yes.
Oh, it is?
Yes, I found it.
We're working on it, kind of. Discussing bugs, but we're working on it. It has the time on it right now.
That's good. You've been working on it this time?
And we had Alex help, and we got the time off. Now we need to figure out all the little ways to make things, other things work, so.
I think.
We tried, and it didn't really work how we thought, but we did get it, the sensors replaced. And we got the time on it for now, and we're, it's, it's in progress, so right now.
Yes, it's a start.
So.
We'll work on that, John.
Working with Alex to figure out a time to meet Nathan Adams down there. Nathan knows how to program it and hold the school.
Yes.
And figure it out.
We're hoping.
I'll try to do it Sunday evening when the sun's not shining so brightly, so it's easier to read.
So if he could just show them real quick how to, Alex was having problems with getting multiple things to load, to scroll through. Like, he could get the things that he had on it already, the welcome to Montezuma at one point, but he couldn't get the time to go in with that. And then, when he looked through the instructions more, he figured out how to get the time on there, but then nothing was scrolling. And then he wiped it clean completely because he had a phone ringing and he had all kinds of things going on. So, we decided that day after being there for quite a long time, that put the time on it for now, get with Nathan, get some better instructions, 'cause he actually knows how to do that, and then hopefully.
It'll be up and running.
It'll be up and going here pretty soon to where we can actually put messages on it like we'd had before. That's the plan.
Instructions are terrible.
Yes.
Yes.
When four, when four of us look at the instructions and none of us can figure it out, the book is very vague.
The keyboard, just a little bigger than a thumb.
Yeah, and you have to stand a certain distance for the sensor to work, and the lighting was during the day, you can't then see what was going, so, yes. Lot of, we learned a lot that afternoon.
Do you remember?
I remember it didn't work. And I remember it was really hot. If I was good, she said.
I'm great.
I say we adjourn the meeting.
I can't wait. The demo twelve sixty-three, I, it's almost done. I, I, I had somebody work on it a little bit, I went over it. I, I think I'm gonna have people submit quotes at your projects meeting in August for the demo of twelve sixty-three. I wanna give people time to, I don't wanna have to rush somebody, I'd like to actually get two or three people put in for it, so you're not stuck with. So, and I got a couple of details I need to talk to somebody about, about backfill, what we should use for backfill on that basement, 'cause it has a basement. So, I did go down there, looked around a little bit this afternoon, and I don't see any big trees that are on that property. There's a couple on, there's one that's, there's a couple that are on the adjacent properties that are pretty good size, but on that property, they all look fairly small. Way I rode it up was remove whatever trees you need to remove in order to get the buildings down, and that, they're gonna have to, I think they're gonna take, that garage is, you can't see the garage, 'cause the tree's growing on top of it, so. But getting the buildings out, getting that fence down, getting the junk hauled off, backfilling it, grading it would be good, so. Can't wait.
Yeah.
Can't wait.
No kidding.
There's probably several roll-offs that just.
I know, I wanna, I wanna make sure these contractors who we invite.
They need to.
Get up there and take a look at it.
Garage enclosed and, there's a whole roll-off in the garage.
Crazy.
And it says in there, anything, part of the deal is, you, you, you take whatever, if there's something in there that you want, you can take, you can take it. So, if there's scrap metal or.
Whether you want it or not, you take it.
Just take it.
That's it. No, I just wanna tell you about that, so, 'cause I was trying to get the timing, your, your July meetings, seems like it's early, I don't know why. Your regular meeting, I thought it might be better just have that done, the projects meeting, give people a little bit more time to, you know, get up there and look at it. 'Cause it's gonna.
Okay, now I.